Okay. We can get this going. I'm calling to order the town of North Stonington Sustainability Committee meet a special meeting, August 17th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Alexis Khan present.
I'm present.
John Lindsay present.
Angela Ball Strasser.
And Chris, are you there? Okay.
He's on mute. I wonder if he knows that he's on mute.
Yeah. Chris, do you know that you're on mute? I wonder if I can un-
You can unmute.
Oh. Chrissy, you there?
I'm here.
Do you want to introduce yourself?
Chris Christos.
Oh, hey, Chris.
Hi, Tula.
How are you?
I'm hanging in. How about you?
Good, thanks.
Thank you for joining.
My pleasure.
And so we, just for way of background, you might already know, but we're a fairly new committee. We've met maybe five times thus far, four or five times. And what we're currently working on, if you may or may not be familiar with the Sustainable CT Program, which the town has been involved in since 2019. In 2019 and 2020, we received the bronze level certification. And so this year, we're trying for the silver certification. The deadline is August 24th. And so the committee meetings, since we've started the Sustainability Committee itself for the town of North Stonington, has been mainly focused, to a certain extent, with just trying to kind of coordinate on the action items and all of the requirements for the Sustainable CT Program. But we are, you know, kind of looking ahead. I think after this meeting, the goal will be to really start to think about what we want to do on an initiative basis that's for the town. You know, things that our group will work on in conjunction with other town committees and other towns members, but what we really want to spearhead. So we're kind of just in last minute cleanup phase for the Sustainable CT application. But then we'll kind of turn things over to look more forward at the year of what we want to accomplish. And I think largely, the great thing about the Sustainable CT Initiative is that we can draw inspiration from the, all the different areas that the Sustainable CT sort of encompasses. It's a very comprehensive program and gives a lot of different ideas, as well as how to implement the idea. So we can use that to a certain extent as a cherry pick what we want to do and then use it as the roadmap in terms of, you know, how to carry it out and what resources we might be able to leverage and that kind of thing. So I just wanted to provide a little bit of background since I think you're new to joining one of these committee meetings.
Yes, I am.
Okay. And so I think the first agenda item is we just wanted to kind of go through some of the progress on that Sustainable CT application so far. So I had another review session yesterday with the fellows. So this is their last official week, but they will be available next week, Monday and Tuesday, because the deadline is Tuesday, to try to, you know, if there's any last things that we need them to do. But otherwise, this is their last final week. So we went through some things. It was mostly, as you may have seen, they added all of the items that we hadn't currently applied for last cycle. Those were color coded in blue. And actually, I will use this opportunity to share my screen. Can you all see the screen? Or John and Chris, can you see it?
Yes.
Okay. And so these ones in blue are the ones that we haven't applied for before. So it's not like updates need to be made. It's more just that we're starting from scratch. But these ones that he added, the fellows added, rather, are those that in discussions with Mike Ergo and Christine Diaz and Bailey Talbot, there are, there are already some work done in them in some capacity where we might be able to apply accordingly and see if we can get credit for it. So the fellows did add those sections. Basically, they were just, a lot of the items that the fellows were going line by line and kind of clarifying what we've uploaded so far and maybe if we still needed some additional clarification. Or they said like, oh, well, you know, you uploaded this, but we still need X, Y, and Z. Largely, most of them, Bailey is tasked with kind of seeing if she can, you know, like additional worksheet to fill out and that kind of thing. So nothing monumental that was really discussed during the fellows' review, but just kind of additional clarification on some of the items that were pending. For example, one thing that was discussed was the health impact assessment and the issue at hand, let me see if I can find it, was that we had submitted last year, as the Emergency Services Committee had done an assessment on, I believe, like, you know, where the difference, whether there's an opportunity to put different stations, for example, like, oh, well, maybe if we have a, an additional emergency services station or, you know, some sort of output where they're outpost, then if somebody is in need within the community, then, you know, like, where, where's, what's the most efficient way to get somebody in kind of a far-flung area of North Stonington? So we kind of use that to package it in a way of like, this is a needs assessment, because how can you address like healthcare in areas that are kind of far away from like the emergency services area? And so we submitted that last time. And the issue is that they haven't, their impact assessment, to my knowledge, has not been like formalized. It's in a draft setting and it's not final. And so therefore, it hasn't been officially like presented to the town. And everything related to Sustainable CT, it has to be essentially like, you have to have completed whatever you put forth. So we've run into this a lot of times with the status of some of our action items is that we say like, look at all the work we've done on this. This is amazing. And they say, that's all fine and dandy, but until you've completed it, you're not going to get credit for it. So then, then we were trying to figure out, and what Bailey was looking into was whether through Yale New Haven or through Ledged Light, whether there was some kind of more regional health impact assessment that had been done that would cite North Stonington and include it. But the problem was that the last one that was done was in something like 2016. And that there's this three-year credit thing. So anything that's older than three years is not always eligible. So something like that, like we're, there was a lot of discussion on some of these things that were like, we're not quite, we as a town are not quite there in what Sustainable CT is looking for. And there doesn't seem to be another way for us to get that, like through another avenue such as Ledged Light's health impact assessment. So we just kind of went through a lot of those. Bailey, I know, was working on a lot of that kind of thing this week. Then I had a call with Phil Ricker on some of the more like conservation-related items. There was a inventory of, which one is it? Inventory, open space inventory, sorry. So he and I are checking back in on Thursday, but he has like the things, you know. The biggest difference that I've noticed, and not that this matters, but they clearly have tried, because Sustainable CT is a very new thing in and of itself. And they've clearly tried to get a way to make a lot of the submissions more systematic and like more consistent. Because I'm sure they have towns that, you know, one supplies this and the other supplies that. And then they're trying to figure out like what, whether this counts and this doesn't. And so what they've introduced this year for the first time is all these templates and worksheets, which is kind of a pain for us, because it's like, we were just taking stuff that, you know, meeting minutes or, you know, screenshots from the website or all these disparate sources. And now all of a sudden, they want us to make it very, very consistent. And so it's a lot of like legwork on something that we might have already done. But now all of a sudden, this year, they require a worksheet or a template. So those are in Bill's court. I'm hoping that he'll be able to help on those. And Bailey's certainly been filling out worksheets galore. So hopefully, those will also be done too. But that additional, that's like the biggest thing I've noticed this year. And I'm like, oh, man, it was nice when they just let us submit whatever we wanted. So I did receive, Tula, you had sent me some things. I'm going to upload them to, like essentially, what happens is I upload them to the Google Drive that we share with the fellows. And then they upload them to the Sustainable CT like portal, because they can navigate it a lot easier than I can. And then they usually are really good about weighing in on, hey, you're kind of there, but like you're missing something. And so I'm hoping that, you know, the remaining of the week, remainder of the week, as well as they are available Monday and Tuesday next week, that they'll say like, oh, well, you know, you're kind of there, but you are still missing X, Y, and Z. So I'll put the remainder of what everybody else sent me. Pat, before she left, sent me some stuff for pollinator pathways that will go up as well into that drive for the, for the fellows to upload and comment on. And then, I'm trying to remember, Sean, I know you're, you gave me feedback on filling out this worksheet and then on the website, which I did provide to Jim. And I'll tackle that in that section three. But did you have anything else that you sent me that I missed, that I forgot to mention in terms of like uploading it to the actual Google Drive?
No, I just updated the Google Drive application, add my name to some of the activities. And I put some notes as to the status of the individual activities. I'm doing update, I'm due to put in an update today, but I haven't quite done it yet, because I've got some additional information, but.
Okay, great. No, I did see that on the, on the sheet. And sorry if I didn't realize that it wasn't an open document. So I apologize that I don't know if anybody had tried to get in and was having difficulty, because the fellows created this. So I thought that they had opened it to everybody, but it looked like they had restricted it in some capacity. So sorry about that.
No, no problem at all. It was easy enough to get into once it was opened up and just provided the updates.
Okay, great. Did anybody else have a hard time getting into it?
I looked at it.
You were fine?
Meeting last week and being stuck, I don't know.
It might have been that they, I don't know, technology. I just, because I've never really used Google Docs that much, because at the bank, everything is like spread. We can't use any Google products. So I, your guess is as good as mine as to how it works, because I've never really used Google Sheets. I don't know, I tried to add you, John, and then I think obviously you got in. But I don't know why it wasn't letting you in originally.
It's pretty fundamental. It's very similar to Excel format. Everything's in a different location, obviously, because they, they've got to make it challenging somehow. It works almost identical to an Excel format.
Okay. Yeah, it looks pretty much the same. Did you have any updates that I'm forgetting to mention? Sorry.
No, I went through and, I mean, honestly, there wasn't anything where it looked like I could just-
Right.
Help at all.
Right. Right. And I talked to Mike the other day, Ergo. And I'm going to plan on trying to schedule for either Friday or Monday. Most likely Monday is probably better, like a final, like, all right, here's where we stand, like, what else? Can we just kind of get in the last minute? But, you know, Mike agreed. He was like, look, it would be great. We're really going to try for silver. And obviously, we put in our best effort. But like, at the end of the day, if we don't get it, we don't get it. And we've given it our best shot. And then this is like the roadmap for next, for the, for the next year.
Is there a likely, we think we have this many points right now?
The last-
Running total?
Though, so it was difficult for the fellows to say during our last, like this past week's call, just because we have so many things that are like, oh, yeah, we're, we're like working on that. So it's hard for them to say, there's so many things that are still like, the worksheets that are still being completed. So we have like a lot of balls up in the air. And so they, they said it's like where we currently stand. We have bronze. So that's like, but that's without all of the submission, all of all these other things that are pending that Bailey's working on or I'm waiting from Bill or I'm waiting from Brett or, you know, like the completed, where they can say, check this, all the parameters have been fulfilled. So I feel like we're not quite there in the position to be able to say like, oh, we're just 10 points away or something of that nature. So anything else on that? Did anybody want to?
I looked at the, I wanted to do for a little housing. I think it was like 11.1.2. But they want like 10 items for five points. So I feel like my energy is probably better off doing something else. I'll do it later. But as far as the August 24th deadline, I mean, the stuff that they're asking for was a lot.
Oh, the 11, 11.1.2, this one?
Like five points. I did the blue and then the one below that.
Oh, you did this one? Create a housing committee with diverse membership?
Yeah, that's what I sent you.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Yeah. Oh, sorry, you put your name there. Sorry. I actually didn't have a chance to look through it. I was, okay, perfect. But yeah, this one, I actually think that we, we uploaded a bunch of stuff for it. I know Bailey was working on the worksheets. And I uploaded, oh, you know what I uploaded was Juliet's presentation that she presented, she sent it to somebody. And then it was, I think it's in the, I was, I was going to try to get the Board of Selectment meeting minutes from last week. Once they're available, I'll just upload those. Again, sometimes you just like submit stuff and hope for the best. And like, you know, we put something and if they like it, they like it. If they don't, oops. But I do think that we are planning on, you know, at least adding some additional stuff based on like what Bailey's working on to this section. We'll see. But that's, that's great that you provided that. Thank you very much. Okay. In, and I guess like, as we wrap this up, I don't know if there are, I mean, this is sort of this truncated list of action items, certainly that's just based on kind of what we've been working on. But would it work, would it be a good idea as a next step, as we're wrapping this deadline up, to go through, and I can reshare this, but like the original action item list, that's the total comprehensive list, to kind of then say like, okay, sometime during our next committee meeting or the following committee meeting, to just go like, I really want to do this. And sort of like the wish list that we can, because I don't know if, we could certainly go through it together in a committee meeting, but I think it is such a long list. I don't know if you think that would be sort of too like a much of a drag. Do you prefer to do it on our own time and reconvene or to go through it like action item by action item during a committee meeting?
I think we can do it on our own and then discuss it.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, that sounds good. It's funny, like, there's so many different preferences. I remember a recent meeting I joined for work where there was like this giant spreadsheet and we joined to talk about something. And they, the team was, it was like a group of like a dozen people who were going line by line through like a 300 rows.
Appreciate it.
We were sitting there like, oh, God, this is the worst meeting ever.
That's about the best use of time.
So I just thought I'd throw it out there, but I agree. Okay, so that could be for a next meeting, just because going through spreadsheet line by line does not sound fun to me as a group, but wanted to throw it out there. Anything else on just sort of pending items that anybody wanted to raise?
I had a phone call with these energized Medicaid people about this Energy Efficiency Engagement Initiative and sort of have more of a sense of what it is. The deadline got pushed from two days from now until October. So we've got some time. So on the other side of this, I'll have more information. We'll talk about it. There's some other decisions to make as far as how we want to apply, but I have some ideas. But essentially, I think it'll be something that will be a nice program to bring some resources into the town as far as energy efficiency. And we'll get some points next year.
Okay. Yeah, so what is, as a result of applying, what does the town get exactly?
I'm still not sure about that. You've been talking to somebody for an hour. But essentially, there is money available for energy efficiency projects. So that could mean for money for website design or for brochures or for flyers and that sort of thing. But they also, they have resources where they can come talk to people at meetings, whether it's a town meeting, our meeting, a selectmen meeting, a church meeting to get the word out.
I see.
And it sounds like they've done more work. It sounds like they're very new and they don't really have a sense of what they're doing either.
Okay.
Which maybe that's a theme. But I kept on asking about, seems like they've done more work in more concentrated areas. So the way this town is sort of spread out, kept on asking if there were particular neighborhoods that were affected. Really, it doesn't really work that way here. So there's a little more detail to be worked out as far as how it can work, but I think it'll work for something.
And so it is sort of, there's a grant portion of it?
It's seen, yes. There's definitely some monies available.
Okay, that's awesome.
Did they, by any chance, give an indication of what the funding capacity and limits were?
I did not ask that question. And I don't think I know the answer to that in this paperwork. But that's a good question. Base, oh, here we go. Base Funding Awards Arrangement, $5,000 to $25,000.
Wow.
Not insignificant.
No, it's nice. I know, right where we can use it.
This is a good match. You'll get the money and he'll spend it for you.
We have to apply for what we want to use it for. So I will, I'll have more information for the next meeting.
And do they have resources? This is kind of a segue into the sustainability webpage. But do they have, is it sort of the kind of thing that you think that they have like, oh, look at all this great info for residents to, that we can put on the webpage?
I think so. I mean, I kept on asking like, so what have, like, give me some examples of what you've done in other towns. And she really, I don't, I didn't leave the meeting with a very good sense, much more than when I started 35 minutes earlier. So that will be on me to gather more information in a, in a way that's more applicable on the other side.
Maybe they don't even know.
I don't think so. I don't think she does.
Well, maybe since, maybe as they get closer to where they'll refine or kind of better understand it before the application.
I'm going to send a follow-up email and just ask more pointed questions on paper or on, you know.
Well, it is interesting, like, if you compare it to the grant crowdsourcing match grant for Sustainable CT, just the fact that like, the application process is like, hey, I want to do that, you know, that's so informal that it wouldn't surprise me if this is not quite.
I mean, it's really formalized, you know, there's like, you gotta fill out all these questions.
Oh, my God.
There's a lot of information to submit, so.
Oh, okay, so the application itself is quite-
It's quite structured.
I see.
Yeah.
Cool. Anything else on just sort of pending items that somebody wanted to bring up?
I mean, it's sort of on the periphery, but I did get confirmation back from EverSource on all of the lights in North Stonington that have been changed to LED. I haven't had a chance to go through it. So once I do, I'll be able to update it. And I think that would give us the confirmation we need to get the points for the LED lighting for the town. It should probably only take me 45 minutes to go through it. But I've just got it done and we should be able to submit for as completed and get recognized for the points associated with that piece of work. I haven't started any of the audits, but I have heard back from a couple of members of the town. So I'm going to be able to do the Department of Transportation, Town Hall, and the transfer station in a sidewalk and audit. It's going to take me about two hours per site. So, yeah, it's a little bit intense. What you fundamentally do is review the solar panels and arrays. You get all the information off of those. You have to understand what they're connected to, how they're tied into the electrical system. And then you have to figure out what the electrical distribution system is for the facility itself. And you just document it all. And you can submit that with recommendations on if they should upgrade their solar arrays. Maybe they want to use battery storage systems to be able to provide battery backup and utilize power more effectively. So there's a few things you can do, but the audits take a little bit of time. I plan on doing them and downhill seemed to be amenable to it. On Saturday morning, when I usually do my chores, I was just going to run out and look at the transfer station and the highway department. And I'll have to figure out what I'm going to do for the town hall. I can probably fit that in sometime in the week, in the middle of the week. The emergency department and the fire department and the school haven't, haven't concluded those discussions yet. I've got to get a little bit more feedback.
Okay, great. Thanks for the update.
Sure.
The other thing I was just going to bring up, and this is that, John, I had given Jen back.
Oh, look at that.
He changed the logo for the pollinator pathways. And he also said that he had the signup button. He understood, sorry, I'm going to just review his email so that I'm not making it up. He understood what we were looking for. And he said, "I will begin the process with the signup piece and will report back to you as progress is made, if anything else comes up forward at my way." Because I had passed, you know, the email signup for the sustainability page to drive traffic to the NOSO site and where people can sign up to the site to get automatic updates on new sustainability initiatives. So he, he's still working on that. But any, did anybody else in the past week have any other feedback that I should share with Jen as he works on the site?
Well, I'm sure he'll do it later, but it wasn't very mobile friendly.
Oh, okay, that's good feedback.
It was all like kind of squished.
Okay. Not mobile friendly. That's a good point. Okay, great. And I don't know if as we go on, you know, just to, I guess, maybe keep in the back of your minds, like for the resources, as well as, for the resources, for example, I was going to see if Sustainable CT has, you know, like, here's for, you know, if you want to learn about conserving energy or if you want to learn about like what plants to plant for pollinator, you know, that's pollinator pathways, but you know what I mean? Like something that they probably have lists of different websites and things like that that we can kind of leverage. But for tip of the week or other things, as you come across it and you want to populate the site with some content, if you wouldn't mind just keeping in mind suggestions to make. Like I was thinking about that, I was, you know, off the top of my head was thinking about that Freakonomics podcast about lawn, like lawns and water conservation and that kind of thing. So things like that kind of genre. Because I think like, we can basically make this our own in terms of what we want to put on it. So if you just have ideas for what we would include, obviously, like, you know, pollinator pathways and Sustainable CT match fund, that we can just take it directly from those sources. But for things like resources and tip of the week, that's really ours to do.
Alexis, and maybe I'm just completely remembering it wrong. But I thought there was also a tab in there for recognizing businesses that are making efforts to be sustainable. Was that not in there? Did I read that somewhere else or am I?
Oh, recognizing-
Businesses around town that are making efforts to be more sustainable. I thought I saw that in one of the original lists, but maybe I'm wrong.
It's a good idea, though.
Yeah, that is a good idea. You could certainly add that. Like highlight a business of the week or, you know, like some sort of the sustainable business?
Yeah, like from the table businesses. People are doing recycling of their grease and waste of things of that nature. A lot of businesses are doing things like that.
No, that's a great idea. I love that. Okay.
Or, I'm, no.
Sorry?
No, I was, you know, just thinking completely, just have a list that- No, I was, you know, just thinking completely, just have a list that could be continually updated of sustainable businesses. But maybe recognize one per week for doing something unique or different. I don't know, just brainstorming on it, I guess.
Yeah, I think, I think it's important to be careful about. Doing something where you put your, you set yourself up for doing something every week. Nine and a half out of ten websites like this.
Yeah.
But it have a tip of the week, the last tip was like a year and a half ago. So if you just take tips.
Okay.
Businesses, then you don't set yourself up for looking dated immediately, like within ten days.
Well, and again, I don't know how difficult it is, so I don't wanna add a ton of additional burden to Jim. I actually do know it's relatively difficult to go from. Like to a mobile application, so that's a whole nother set of parameters he's gonna have to develop, but. It'd be kind of interesting to be able to have somebody just simply monitor it, and if anybody wanted to add an update for sustainability effort, they could. I get a little bit concerned about the Facebook effect where it might be, it might not be content that would be suitable. But if it were monitored, maybe that might be easier than providing a weekly update, just allow people to provide sustainability tips of the week. At random.
So I wonder if in the contact us or maybe in both places in the tip of the, now we maybe just make it tips of the moment or something like that. In both places, if we just add something like for, cause I think, I think Jim will have to update it actually, like from a logistics standpoint. But if we have a way to email, like email this inbox if you have something to add and then he could just plop it in there.
A manager of both things, I'm curious.
Right, right. Cause I don't, I don't know if they'll, it seems like he owns, you know, like there's not like a forum that we could. You know, just let people post willy-nilly, but if they could just in, in both sections have the ability to submit stuff for him to upload. I think that, like, he seems really responsive and able to add stuff pretty quickly.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, boy, he deserves a lot of credit for ripping this thing out so quickly.
I know, I know. Okay, that's great ideas. Anything else? Okay, and then I'll just give a quick update on, because Pat left. We're just kind of working on the bank account situation for the pollinator pathways, community match grant program. I applied for, the first step, as we mentioned last time, is that I need a tax ID number. In order to open the account, and so I'm just waiting to get the tax ID. And then there's somebody in her place, and sorry, I will get the person's name, but. Who will be sort of running it in Pat's absence. I don't know if you all know her. Sorry, Sha, yeah, thank you, Shan, thank you. Yes. Thank you. Glad you also didn't have to answer, cause I thought it was Sean.
I don't know, I just.
Oh, okay. So that's kind of the last, you know, what's pending for the. Pollinator pathways, is that we just need a bank account opened. I think that's all on my side. Any other? If anybody else wants to mention.
I've got nothing else. I mean, a week from now, this is done.
Yeah.
And it's sort of it.
Just going to check to see our next, so the submission is next Tuesday. It's due, and then I think we don't have, to my knowledge. A next meeting set up, because obviously, like, this was the final, you know, the weekly meetings were the final push, but. What are your thoughts about? Frequency and timing and things like that, now that, you know, after this, we can kind of decide. There's no need to, we need weekly unless we want to.
So we're not meeting next week, right?
No, I don't have anything in the calendar.
So I'll add two quick comments. One, thanks for the reminder that it's due Tuesday, because I'll make sure I do the review and get the lighting information in. So that, that can get us a few additional points. I think that category was fifteen points, so I'll get that done. And. Since you're asking, I, I. I suggest the, once every two weeks.
Yeah, I think once a week is. I would have like the submission for the agenda, I'd be like, oh, it's already this, like, the week.
It happens, yeah.
So we think every day, what is, what is kind of a, I know you have to run, what's a common committee frequency?
Once a month, unless you're really trying to get stuff done, then bi-weekly is better.
Okay.
But you could always do a once a month and a special meeting or.
Okay.
Do bi-weekly and cancel the second meeting.
Okay. Any preferences?
I, I, you know, I hate to say this as tools walking out, but. I kinda like the idea of, not that I'm not quite busy enough to find other things to, but I kinda like the idea of once every two weeks, simply because. We seem to have a little momentum and I'd be concerned that if we went to once a month, we might lose it a little bit. Maybe not, maybe that would just give us intense focus at the end, make sure we produce something. But I know I've got a lot of opportunities to put forward, so that hopefully, if we don't achieve silver this year, we'll be able to achieve it next year. I wanna stay on top of those things, so that's thoughts on why two weeks instead of a month.
Okay.
I think that, I mean, so we started and then it's been this rush of doing this one thing, and now this one thing is, we'll call it over for all intents and purposes. So we're almost like starting again.
Right.
So I think at the beginning of starting again, every two weeks is a good idea.
Okay.
And then at some point, once a month will probably be a good idea.
Right, right.
But for the next month or two, maybe we do it like this and we get our agenda, what we really wanna do for the year and we start our projects and then. You know, if we're coasting a little bit, come like fall, that's good.
That sounds good. So that would be, then we'll look for the week of. The, like thirty, like thirty or thirty-first, cause that will be two weeks from today. Or two weeks from this week, does that make sense?
What's the difference?
Like, the week of Monday is the thirtieth, I think that's, is that Labor Day?
Mondays, no, I think Labor Day is the.
Okay, okay, so the week. The last week of August, first week of September.
Yeah, I'm around, I'm, I'm not around on the second, third, but the thirtieth, thirty-first and first, all good for me.
Okay.
Tuesday the thirty-first?
She's a thirty-first, okay, and I think we're doing six because of Tula's, the six work okay? Cause Tula has the, the second meeting at seven, so that's why we had, like, sometimes we were doing seven, but.
It's every other for her or every for her?
I think it's every other.
It's really hard for me to get here at six.
Yeah, okay, let me see if she can do, so this would be Tuesday, the thirty-first. The preferences for seven PM and I'll just check with Tula.
Well, if she's every other. Maybe we just do, we just alternate on her, if everyone else is, is amenable, we just alternate on her schedule. So.
Go like three weeks and then just start that.
So either we do a meeting in two weeks or in three weeks, depending on her schedule, and then we roll two weeks from there.
Got it, no, that makes sense. And, cause seven PM is preferable for all, all.
I mean, I can do six thirty.
Okay.
If that's better than seven, if you wanna get in and out earlier.
Okay. John, do either of those, are those both okay with you?
Yep.
Okay, I'll check with Tula to see what her, yeah, cause then we would, might just push it three weeks and then be on. And every other week thereafter, so it would be like the week of September.
Seven.
Yeah. And then, and then it would be the twenty-first and, you know what I mean, like, every other week after that. Okay, I'll check and get back to you, but that sounds good. All right, anything else?
I have a question and a.
Yes.
I got a question.
Yes.
The night, the lights that you're, you're looking into the town for the lights. Does that, does that include checking on the, the lights as they shine, were part of the. The system of, of darkness that, that flows down the east coast.
Oh, right.
Right.
So check on the town if, if all of their lights go along with this.
Yeah, so the, the initiative that we're taking, that, that we're taking a look at is associated with. The streetlights throughout the town are typically what they call a metal hell-eyed light and they're very inefficient. And what we were looking at is, and we believe the work has already been done, we're just confirming that. We believe they've been changed to LED lighting, which are highly efficient and provide a similar level of light. They didn't necessarily provide us any information associated with coordinating. With the dark skies initiative.
So. It should be coordinated with them.
No, the big one, yeah.
Yeah, and I don't know when we reviewed it. So Chris, are we, is there anything that the town itself has been? Involved in dark skies or is it that you're just asking how that light, the lighting piece fits in? Are you involved in anything related to the town's efforts on dark skies?
Not anymore.
Okay, do you know, was there something in place prior?
Yeah, it's been going on for a long time and I don't know that. You, you're talking about changing a particular bulb and I understand that. I just wanna make sure that when we change bulbs to save electricity, that we're not violating anything with night skies. Because the night skies provide for the moths and the, and the bats. Among, among the star watchers and it, it's a very important part of the, the overall process of. Of sustainability.
It makes perfect sense and I, I really like the concept of dark skies, does. Is there anybody that you know, Chris, that we can reach out to that may have been involved in the original initiative to understand? What they did to coordinate the lighting to make sure that it complied with the dark skies initiative, any name at all?
Diana Urban, she's in New York now.
Know her quite well. My son did an internship with her, so. Yeah, yeah, I'll reach out to Diana and, and see if we can get some information on that. And, and, and I would honestly say, I, I don't believe that the changing of the lights would have any effect on the dark skies initiative. Cause that's usually coordinated at the, the head end of the power source for the lights themselves, so. I'll just double check and, and get that information, but it's a great point.
Thank you. The, the fixture itself is very important for dark skies. It, it brings the light from shining like three sixty or it brings it so that it's going down at. Where it's, where we need it, onto the street or wherever, and not into the sky. And that's based on the, the shape and design of the light fixture.
I'm very familiar with exactly what you're talking about, so when I, I'll reach back to. EverSource and touch base with them on what it is they did and what they provided, if it's not already in the information, I just haven't read through it yet. And, and we'll get, we'll get some confirmation on it, but it's a, it's a great point, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you doing that work. Let's see, there was one more thing, if my brain can bring it back up.
Just while you're, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Well, no, it, I didn't write it down, so I can't remember it, of course.
Happens to me all the time. And John, I'll, I'll send, so I was just looking in the overall two thousand twelve action overview worksheet. Section three point one, three, like three point thirteen is promote dark skies and it's. Part of it, part of it is public education outreach related to light pollution. And the importance of dark skies for local businesses, institutions and residences. But then there's also adopt a policy to analyze lighting needs at municipal facilities and reduce unnecessary lighting. And to replace and install municipal outdoor lighting with products that have the IDA fixture seal of approval.
Or equivalent, okay. I will, and that's part of the document that you shared with us on Google Doc, so I believe. I'll just pull up. Row one twenty-six, highlight it and I'll.
It's, 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 you know what, it's not in the Google doc, I'll send this to you separately, cause I, I don't think it was in there. I can just add it, you know, I'll just add it and that will make it easier, so that we don't have things in multiple places, so. Yeah, I'll add that and then it will be in the Google Drive.
Okay, great. What are you gonna call it? There's quite a few documents now getting in Google Drive, just so I can reference it quickly.
Google Drive, I'm sorry, like that Google sheet, the, 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 the one that originally you said you weren't able to, that you added your name to.
Okay, all right, I set a bookmark for it, so I'll be able to find it quickly, great, thank you.
Sure. Oops, sorry, go ahead.
It had to do with the pollination pathway. Are you looking at what the town does or are you going to include properties in town?
Um, so this is a good question for Pat who is not in the. She wasn't able to join this committee meeting, however, she, um, to my knowledge, let's see. I think it was what the town was doing in terms of education to residents, so everything that's her. That she and some of the members of the garden club are doing with regard to making brochures and pamphlets. That are going to be passed out to residents that are along the pollinator pathway and then also like lawn signs and. You know, making some plants actually available to some people that are pollinator friendly. So I think that's, it's sort of like a subset, it's not directly the town doing it, but it's like a committee made up of garden, not a committee. But like a loose organization of individuals working on that as part of, like, I think a subset of the garden club is my understanding.
Okay, that's good, because I know of several properties in town, my own included. That would qualify for that and there's a. An organi, national or, yeah, I think it's just national organization that has been putting out. Information about this so that you don't wanna be. Duplicating your effort. It's the National Federation, let's see, National, I can get you, I can get that to you. And, cause they've already assigned a, a certificate to my property.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, that's great. I didn't realize that they certified individual properties.
Yes.
That's great.
Yeah, tell my neighbors, because they think my place is a mess.
You do it for the butterflies.
You got that right, and the birds and the bees.
I, I have, when I'm working, when I am working from home, my office overlooks this hydrangea that. It's, I don't know, I don't even know the name of it. It's like the white kind that's long and kind of cone shaped, not like the regular hydrangeas. And, oh my gosh, the bees and butterflies are insane. I just watch them, it's like flurry of bees, so I, I was feeling. Uplifted about our pollinator situation outside my window.
That's great. Butterfly bush is another one that drives them nuts.
Yes, I have two of those, so yeah, I just can't see them from my window, unfortunately.
They're easily propagated, by the way. Takes about a year. Yeah, you take, you take a branch. You take a branch and you curve it down to the ground and put dirt over it.
No way.
Yeah, it's, it. Yeah, it's, it, it works pretty good. I mean, they do it naturally in some cases. But it's, it's a way that you can take your overgrown bush, not, I feel, I don't feel that they're ever overgrown, but you, you take your overgrown bush and you bring one, one branch down, cover it with, with good soil, make sure it stays moist. And next year, you can cut that branch off, and you've got another whole bush.
Wow, so it has to stay attached to the roots, like you don't clip it, you leave it attached, and then you just cover it with dirt?
That's right. You, the, the bush itself provides the nutrients for the, what's going to be the new bush until it roots and, and can provide for its own nourishment.
I see. That's a good tip.
All right, Alexis, I want a butterfly bush next to you, please.
I was actually just going to say, I, I think we need to capture this clip of audio and add it to our new website for the tip of the week.
That's a good, that's a good idea, actually. That's a really good idea. I mean, we have the Zoom recording, so that's, that's doable.
Thanks, Chris. Cool.
Thank you.
I wish you luck with your work.
Thank you.
So much.
And thanks for joining. We, I, I was very confused. I didn't know who you were, but I'm so glad that you joined. I thought I was in the wrong meeting at first, because I was like, I, there's somebody here I don't know.
Incognito.
Thank you for joining.
My pleasure.
Okay, anything else?
Since I'm, from my side, I'm eleven minutes late, but it was a good conversation.
Oh, sorry, sorry, you have to go. Okay, motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Hi.
What do we do without Tula?
I don't know. All right, well, have a good evening, and we'll either meet two weeks from today or three weeks, depending on Tula's schedule.
All right. Thanks so much.
Bye.
Nice night.
You too.